Okay, alright.
Is this yours? I think that's yours. Is this your stop button or your easy button?
Accidentally hit it over.
Yeah.
I didn't realize you could hit. I set it off with the lid on.
Or somebody gave her keys to get it?
No, actually after, uh, after Harry Pearl.
Oh, Harry Pearl, yeah?
Yeah.
You've been many emails from him. I saw something very recent.
(Music)
Good evening. We're gonna get started. Let the meeting of the Rochester City School Board, monthly business meeting begin. We'll start with a second if I can indulge you please. As you may or may not know, our president Malik Evans lost his mom this week. And our thoughts and prayers go to the Evans family. So I just wanted to take just a second, a minute of silence to think about the family and to wish them well as they go through this endeavor. So if I may do that.
Moment of silence?
Moment. A moment of silence please. Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll begin the meeting with the Act of Reverence, the Pledge of Allegiance, which will have Mr. Powell lead for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll go to the next item on our agenda, which is recognition of the recipients of the Alberta Moss Scholarship Fund. And want to introduce Mary Thomas for the scholarship recognition, if we may. Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent Vargas and esteemed... Okay. Again, good evening Superintendent Vargas, to the esteemed members of the Board of Education for the Rochester City School District and to each of you here this evening. My name is Mary D. Thomas and I have the honor to present our recipients for the Alberta Moss Scholarship. For those fortunate enough to have known Alberta Moss, the characteristic that shone the brightest was her deep faith and her passion to help others, especially children. She carried her city school district work into her own home, where it served as a classroom and halfway house for many. She was a faithful board member of Faith in Action Network of Rochester. And to honor her, the Alberta Moss Scholarship Fund was established to give a hand up to promising students. Bert, as affectionately known, was a woman of passion and purpose who believed that education rather than intimidation was the key. The scholarship serves as one way to honor her selfless dedication. On June 5th, 2012, the Alberta Moss Scholarship Committee awarded six students who met the criteria set forth for a scholarship of $1,000. And each student will have the privilege of working with a mentor from the Board and the Faith in Action Network of Rochester. It is a pleasure for me to introduce four of our scholarship recipients with us this evening. Two of them because of other commitments could not be with us. As I stand this afternoon, we have Lisa Elam with us and Bonnie Rubenstein and Gail Mont as some of the committee members that worked with us that year-long to make this successful for six of our students. If you will please join me as I call your name each student, would you please come forward? This evening we have with us Tanisha Barr. Tanisha Barr is the daughter of Michelle Sinkler, an Edison High School honor roll and high honor roll student, as well as an Urban League Black Scholar. Tanisha plans to attend Buffalo State College where she will study industrial engineering. We're very proud of you Tanisha. Nadia Graham, would you please join us? Nadia is the daughter of Donna and Wallace Mabry and a National Honor Society and an Urban Black League Scholar. She's a graduate of the School of the Arts. She will attend Buffalo State College and study early childhood education. Congratulations again, Nadia. Ayann Mohammed, would you please join us? Ayann is the daughter of Doyle Egal and a graduate of Thomas Middle, Thomas Jefferson High School. She is an honor roll student and has perfect attendance. She will study human services at Monroe Community College in the fall of the year. Congratulations Ayann. Luis Rivera Cruz, please join us. Luis is the son of Miguel Cruz, graduate of James Monroe High School as valedictorian of his class, as well as being a high honor roll student. He will study business management at Nazareth College in the fall of the year. Very proud of you Luis. And two of our students who could not be with us this evening, Yumana Dakai, daughter of Gopal and Rupa Devi Dakaka, a Joseph C. Wilson Magnet High School honor roll and high honor roll graduate. She will attend Monroe Community College and study nursing. Kimberly Hill could not join us this evening, but she's an honor roll and high honor roll graduate of the School of the Arts. She's the daughter of Gloria Hill and will be studying nursing at Monroe Community College. A round of applause for our recipients. To Superintendent Vargas and the Board of Education and to each of you, thank you so much for allowing us this evening to bring the first recipients of the Alberta Moss Scholarship and present them to you. Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you.
Congratulations to all of the scholarship winners and thank you staff for putting that together. It's always heartening to see our students do well and we wish them and their families much luck in the future. We do, our next agenda item is speakers on the agenda items. We do not have any speakers, is that correct Madam Clerk?
Prove the minutes.
Oh, okay. I flashed by the acceptance of the minutes. So can I have a motion to accept the minutes? Proved. And seconded, the minutes are accepted. Any, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Alright.
Anybody against or abstaining or? Alright. Minutes passed. So we don't have any speakers, any agenda items. We will then go to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Vargas?
Yeah, thank you Vice President Cruz. Please to report to the Board that the ITA and the district have reached an agreement for the APPR for the teacher principal evaluation. And I want to thank Bethany, she has been our lead negotiator along with a team of people that I too many to mention. For Beverly Swell who is here from Teaching and Learning. Sean Noon wasn't here, but there are many other people that did play a key role. So I'm very pleased to announce to you that we would meet our deadline. So as I, as you know, they are probably approximately $100 million that could be a risk if we had not reached this agreement. And of course is subject to the review of the State Education Department. And I look forward to report to you in terms of the outcome from that review. The, in terms of staffing, we have, we are meeting our goal. I want to thank the entire Human Resource Office, the people who work there. We have now today 98% of staff members have been placed. That's a significant progress from year past. And that is important because we want our school to be ready. We want people to be thinking during the summer month to get ready for a school. In addition to that, in terms of getting ready for the school in September, we are for the first time required that every school have a at least one or two orientation before school open for parents. And I'm very pleased to tell you that people are working hard already to get ready for school. We just closed school about less than a week ago. And we now entering the summer school period and I want to report to you that we're seeing an increase of students that are now going to summer school for regions exam. That is no surprise to me because of the, now the students of this graduating class that graduated in 2012 this past week are required to score 65 or more if they're in the general education population. So common sense would tell us that the student will have greatest challenge. The good news is that, as I said, they are not giving up. They are signing for summer school. And we also are giving them a longer time to prepare them. In the past, we have offered 10-day course, but that's no longer doable given the challenges. So again, over 10,000 already have registered. Karina, I don't know if she's here. Her staff is working incredible to make sure that we have a successful summer school this year. Old City High, we have a preliminary report. We have 540 students that are assigned to go to summer school there. And the work continued to make sure that, as we mentioned to you, a lot of those youngsters in Old City High are going to need from July to July if they are going to graduate because many of them are far behind. So placement, I could thank Vicky Ramos. She's doing an incredible job as well as the entire team. In terms of placing our students, they all have been placed. Again, significant improvement from prior year. We no longer have family asking, those that were within the system, of course. It is quite possible that someone arrive and they do today or next week, and they will. And the work continued, but in terms of people that are within the system attending city school today, they know where they're going to be next year, which was a simple but no simplistic goal that we have established. And again, thank you for everyone in the district because it's a team effort to make that possible. And we have made significant progress in that regard. Last but not least, I cannot finish this report but telling you that I continue to be concerned with the number of students that are not coming to school as it was demonstrated by the number of students that didn't show up to take the regions exam. So if you don't show up to take your exam, obviously, I don't need to tell you that we have an impact on our student lives in terms of their ability to graduate. But I will have a breakdown, Commissioner Adams has requested on the number and the number are unacceptable to me and it's something that we're going to have to work this year, from year to come. In terms of making sure that we do everything we can to get our students to take the exam. We had to make sure that we have high expectation for our care and also we're going to need the help of everyone to do this. And we are going to analyze this and begin to work on this because we no longer can allow this to continue if we are going to improve graduation rate and all the area that our student need to work on. So that conclude my report. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you Superintendent. Any questions for the Superintendent?
Vice President Cruz?
Commissioner Morgan?
With regard to summer school, I just received a call oh probably about around 4 o'clock or so. I have a parent who says that she, her son passed the grade but wants to put her son in summer school to get additional education. She was told that because he passed, he couldn't be enrolled in summer school. So can you talk about the criteria for summer school? I also additionally, I had heard a contact Shirley Green because she indicated to me that her son was diagnosed with Tourette Syndrome. So, Ms. Green, you may be getting a call if she's here to this parent. So what's the criteria for being admitted to summer school?
Well, we have several depending on the program. Like we have courses that can take it for the first time. We also had the, that you had to, that you, we, the main emphasis for those kids that fail the course. But there's no reason if a youngster could benefit from summer school and if we have room available that we couldn't. So I would urge you to have the parents send me an email and I will look into it.
Well, I asked her to contact Shirley Green. So if you can get the message back from Shirley and then you all can make that connection. But I still need to understand what's the, what's the criteria so that you're not saying that students who pass can't automatically is disqualified from summer school.
Actually, you're bringing an excellent point. And I will say that if I was running a school building and I do know that college readiness, you had to have, let's say, 75 in English and you took the region and you scored 68, that you might want to encourage that youngster to put that emphasis to get ready. Also, there are multiple reasons why would you want a youngster to continue taking a course if it's possible in terms of finance and all the reason. Because we couldn't offer to 38,000, but if, I mean to, to as many thousand students that we have during the school year. So there's, the emphasis is the key here. I don't think that there's a criteria that say that we won't allow you to go. However, it's quite possible that someone in the front line could misunderstand that. But the essence of you, if you look at our college readiness for the past three years have been around 6% of the entire district. And the measure that they stay use is students score 75 and 80 on the exam. And I do know at least one principle that if the kid passed with 60... And I do know at least one principle, that if the kid passed with 60, less than 75, this particular principle makes an emphasis that the kid should continue to work on that course to do better. But that's something that I can take a look into the future as we, as we are looking at this whole issue of college readiness. And also, the GPA of our students, I will submit to you, that is, we had a, last time I looked at it, from one quarter, 57% of our kid had a GPA of about less than 200. So if I was advising a student, I will continue to encourage and to have high expectation for them to work until they get to a point that they could get into, take advantage of what our college average opportunity. And the first thing that a college look at is your GPA. So I think that embedded in your question, there's an interesting assumption that perhaps we need to take a look at it to continue to emphasize to kid that the finish line is when we consider you ready for whatever endeavor you are planning to take at the graduation.
Mr. President?
Commissioner.
I just want to congratulate your administration, Dr. Vargas, and the work that went into preparing for the summer school program. It didn't start with the grading of Regents exams. The different teachers identified students that were in danger of failing, or if you don't assume that they're going to pass the test. My daughter is an example, and I, you know, try to be philosophical about it and say, "Well, that's what being parent is," and I am part of the parent constituency. I got so many call, robocalls telling me when the open enrollment for summer school was. If I didn't know as a robocall, I would have called Linda Duzmore and said, "Take my name off your list," because she pulled the rabbit out of her hat, and she doesn't have to go to summer school. But the point is that the planning for this happened well before the Regents exams were taken, much less scored. And likewise, if we, in our family, were to consider taking an additional course in the summer for enrichment or to get ahead of her coursework, the time to have the conversation isn't the week of the Regents. The time to have that conversation is with counselors months before summer, before this, before the school year ends, so that counselors can actually flag a seat in summer school for each child. And that's, that's the way the planning has to be in order for anyone in the system to be able to say yes to a request like that. I think there probably will be seats available, but then, but at this stage, a parent's going to have to wait and see who's a no-show for summer school, who didn't, who was, who should have been to summer school but didn't sign up for it, before we can know whether there are seats available.
Correct. Thank you.
But thank you, and to your administration, for being totally on top of that situation. I wish I hadn't gone through that experience, but as a, as representing the parent constituency, I'm glad to know it works, the system works.
I just have a couple more.
Thank you.
Other questions? With regard to the Regents exam, those students who did not show up to take it, do we have any feedback data at this point as to why they did not come to take the exam? Mr. Superintendent?
We are collecting that. We have, we right now have the breakdown in the area that we experienced, and we have it right now, school by school, we have the name, and we are analyzing that.
And my last question, well, request is, I understand that School Without Walls, the commencement, scored 20, almost 20 percentages in terms of, is it, is it test scores? Am I correct, correct on that, Mr. Superintendent?
Last year, graduation rate, they had the greatest increase.
Okay. I just want to, can, can you talk a little bit about what she did in order to do that?
Well, I do know that they, as you know, they, from what I saw there on my visit to that school, was I think that the entire staff was very concerned because the graduation rate, the prior year was, it wasn't what it needed to be. And they, I do believe, I just sense a need, sense of urgency. Actually, I was there in that school the first day that it, in September, when school opened, I believe, actually, it was August 30th. If I'm not surprised, and I did see in my conversation with, with the people there, was an emphasis that they sensed that they could have done better, and, and they did. And I think that the, they also, you have a very dedicated group of educators there, and also, that is, they began to target services to kid in a more, you know, systematic way. And I don't think they're leaving anything up to chance. I think that what Commissioner Power was saying, that's extremely important, to set the expectation that if you are risk of, you know, making it, we communicate with them, and we have a plan for you.
So they're number two in terms of our schools that have the highest graduation rate, so to be at one, where do they rank?
I had that number with me, but I, I do know that they rank the top five.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Superintendent? Okay. There being none, thank you.
And just congratulate School Without Walls for all the work that they've done.
I, that's one of the reason we, as you know, the graduation rate to me is unacceptable as a district, but that school is one that we did talk about graduation there for that reason, because they, they, their effort paid off. And also, like I, like I mentioned to you, that it seemed to me that the culture there right from day one, and I could tell you that I, last year, I was a little disturbed by how we opened our school, and I could tell you the school that we're ready to receive children, and the one that we're not. And that's why we have asked principal to make sure that they have an orientation plan that is paying attention to the needs of families, the needs of our teachers, and the needs of our students. And they were building that I went in, for example, that teacher didn't know which room they needed to be. And I understand, I know putting that, I take full responsibility, because last year we had a budget process that was very stressful. Thanks to this board, I think that we can tell our school that the reason we are planning early and allocating resources early is for a purpose. We want them to have a good summer, but we also want people to plan better. And that, even that makes a difference, because we only have 180 days. If you miss the first week of school, getting people placed and located, including a student, that's problematic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Last questions? All right, we'll go to Board reports, starting with the Excellence in Student Achievement. Commissioner White?
Yes, Commissioner Cruz, the Excellence in Student Achievement Committee met on Monday, June 18th, to receive an update on the Youth in Transition Initiative. I, the details of that report are contained in a memo dated June 28, 2012, which you all have. They did, it is worthy of highlighting some improvements that they've made to that system. There's a memorandum of understanding between the Rochester School District and other placement operations throughout the county. In the past, the right hand didn't know what the left hand was doing. And this, and these memorandums of understanding allow district employees to communicate with, for example, county employees, and not have as an impediment them not being able to get access to student records. There's a joint pre-discharge planning, planning in process. There's also a planned positive school reentry, which is tied to the response to intervention teams. The committee also received an update on All City High program. All teachers and administrators are in place and ready to begin for the September of this upcoming school year. To date, according to Ms. Jordan, there are 1,183 students that are enrolled in All City High, with 53% of these students being on track to graduate on time. Only 8% of these students are 18 or older and have less than three credits, and that is good news. The majority of students enrolled in All City High thus far are from Edison and Franklin. I wanted to know if Commissioner Adams wanted to add anything to that part of the report? And I, I know I'm catching you off guard, but Commissioner Adams was part of that meeting, and I, you know, there are some ongoing concerns that we have regarding All City High, but from my own observation, I know that Ms. Jordan is committed to addressing those. One of the concerns we had was regarding the reading program, and Commissioner Adams made this point, and I thought very eloquently, she indicated, she asked Ms. Jordan, "Well, what reading program are we using for these kids at All City High?" And Ms. Jordan responded, "They were using Springboard." And we said, "Well, wait a second. How are our students doing on Springboard? How were these students doing on Springboard before? They were using it before?" And the answer was, "Yes." And we thought, "Well, why are we using Springboard for this new initiative if this is going to treat these students in a different, positive way?" So I think, and there were some other issues that came up. You know, the old saying, "If you keep on doing the same thing again and again and again, you're going to get the same results." So we raised that issue with respect to reading, but I think there were other issues as well. But again, I, I left that meeting feeling like Ms. Jordan was especially committed to having that school succeed, and everybody on her team was committed to that as well. Our next Excellence in Student Achievement Committee meeting is Monday, July 17th, at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Our next committee is Finance. Commissioner Paul?
Yes. Finance committee met twice. Once last week, on Thursday, we, on the Thursday, June 14th, we considered resolutions 831 through 843, and our monthly financial reports, as usual. So let me start by offering up a motion to accept the monthly financial reports for May 2012.
This is a proper motion on the table to accept the financial reports.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner White. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The, the resolutions were routine, for the most part. We had three procurement and supply contracts, educational facilities contract, and one information management and technology contract. Then we met again at 6:07 this afternoon and discussed two resolutions that were of an urgent nature because they are for summer school. One being the summer RTS contract to get our high school students to summer school. That is Resolution 853, and it is in your packet. And it was approved by the committee this afternoon. The second one, Aramark, is for, roughly two-thirds of it represents food service for our summer school students, both elementary and high school. And the other third is essentially, Aramark is a subcontractor to us, and we are, have accepted the contract from the city to pet, to provide food for the summer rec programs. So it's a $500,000 contract for the food for summer school and for the summer rec programs, of which the city will be paying us on a contract basis for their share of that. That resolution was approved by the board. It is not in your packet. There is a placeholder number on it, and I might offer up that because Resolution 851, or 852 has been pulled, I would like to make a motion that this resolution for Aramark be substituted as Resolution 852.
There's a motion to replace the old 852 with the new 852, which is the Aramark resolution. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi. Welcome, Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Hi. All right.
Let's see. So if I didn't say it before, the committee did approve all the resolutions brought before it with varying degrees of discussion. Our next Finance Committee meeting will be held July 19th, that's a Thursday, at 5:30 p.m. And that concludes my, my Finance Committee report. The only other thing I want to share with the board is that Big Five Conference of Schools is going to be holding its Executive Committee meeting here in Rochester the first week of August, either August 6th, 7th, or 8th. And I'm sure that anyone who would like to come in and join us would be welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Paul. Okay, our next committee report, Community and Intergovernmental Relations, Commissioner Elliott.
Thank you, Vice President Cruz. Let me take a moment of personal privilege to talk about a couple of things that I participated in. One is the, I had a report from Beverly Gachet about the firefighters' public safety program. And to date, we have, I think it's a capacity for the Rochester Educational Center where they're going to be housed, 50 people, and we still have placements for four. So I want to just thank Beverly and her team for the work that they've done regarding that. There's still some opportunity for the emergency communication center, the 911. There are no people who are interested in that. We don't have any people recruited. But there, it is good pay, it's on a bus line, benefits, and so we're going to be promoting the opportunities for some of our students to serve, to be trained for that program as well. We, there's some of us here who also attended the facilities modernization groundbreaking ceremony for school number 50. A lot of people attended that. What I was also impressed about is the young men and women who we are training in the ROR program, those people of color, to participate in this project as well. And so there were probably about 100 of those young men and women, all in hard hats, ready to go to work. So we're just very pleased, and I commend the facility modernization project in Gilvane for that work that they've done around ensuring that we have people living in the city who are going to be working on those jobs. And I do know that perhaps every person who's trained may not be, may not get a job, but what I'm really excited about is that we have some opportunities with some other companies to be able to help to place them. So we'll be talking about that in the future. And lastly, also attended, along with Vice President Cruz, the 3-on-3 City Council and School District meeting over at, at the City of Rochester, to try to discuss what things that we have in common that will help us to become more efficient as two municipal entities. Unfortunately, the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee did not meet, and I have to apologize to my committee members because I really got that confused. I thought that the budget hearing for approval was one date and it was something else. I really got that confused. And so I had canceled the meeting as a result of that, and I do apologize to my committee members. And the next Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, that date will be determined. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. We'll go to Board Governance. Commissioner Campos?
The Board Governance Committee has not met since the last business meeting, but will be meeting in July to discuss and outline a process for an evaluation tool for the superintendent, as well as forward what we've been using in the past so that the superintendent can take a look at it and see if it's suffice, so that we can bring it to the full board for acceptance at the July business meeting. We have been in the midst of our board staff reviews, even though we haven't been meeting. The wellness task force also met, and we recently adopted the wellness policy in the two schools. It's going really, really well. There's been notable improvements, including healthier vending options, community gardens, use of exercise, carts to supplement recess periods. So this year, the policy goes into full effect for the entire district. So we're working on ways that we can monitor and monitor the policy. And just a quick point of personal privilege, I got to go to East Graduation, as well as the GED Graduation, and the graduation for the LPNs at the Family Learning Center. And the program for the LPNs, they have 99% job placement. So it's just one of the gems that's in our district. It was absolutely amazing, and a bunch of them could not even come to their graduation because they were working. So it's just great to be able come to their graduation because they were working. So it's just great to be able to see that at the Family Learning Center, being able to help people get employment and get them educated for employment as well. That concludes my report.
I forgot a couple of things. Can I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I forgot a couple of things. Two, as Commissioner Campos reminded me, I did attend the graduation ceremony for school about walls, as well as Shalott High School. And with regard to the LPN, we are getting some information that some of the hospitals may not be hiring LPNs in the future. So that's something that we're going to have to, I did mention it to Beverly this morning, that's something that we may have to advocate for. Because many of our students are in that program and it's a good salary, you know, for our students to work in hospital, good benefits. But now, some of the hospitals are saying that they're not going to accept LPNs, they're going to accept LPNs. My concern about that is many of those LPNs are women of color. And so we have to make sure that we begin to look at why are they not going to hire LPNs. So that's gonna be something that's gonna be forthcoming in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. That's a great point. We'll go to the Audit Committee. Commissioner Adams?
The Audit Committee was not scheduled to meet in June. The next scheduled meeting is July 23rd at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. And we don't have a student rep this evening. Parent Council report. Ms. Lucas?
Good evening.
My name's Candace Lucas. I'm the current president of the Rochester City School District Parent Advisory Council. The Parent Advisory Council is a volunteer organization of parents responsible for sharing, promoting, and communicating information between parents and the district offices and vice versa. We operate in collaboration with the Office of Parent Engagement with the assistance of Gladys Pedrazo-Burgers and Willie Robinson. Gladys and Willie have been instrumental in working with the parents to help us understand the dynamics of the district and navigate our way through the system. The council advises district staff, the superintendent's office, and the Board of Education on policy issues that benefit all district children, actively encourages parents to participate in the city's educational system at all levels, and advocates for the involvement of parents from the inception to the implementation and evaluation of policies and regulations related to the education of the city's children. Parents of the council sit on many of the school board committees, including policy, finance, excellence in student achievement, community and intergovernmental relations, facilities modernization, and the executive school-based planning team. The council will hold elections tomorrow, June 29th, to decide the new executive committee, which includes the chair, vice chair, secretary, and parliamentarian for the 2012 to 13 school year. Upon election of the new executive committee, the council will begin planning for the next year. So this may be my last report. The council was pleased to meet with members of the board and the superintendent at our last Parent Advisory Council business meeting. We thanked the commissioners and the superintendent, it was Commissioner White, Campos, and Adams, for taking the time to meet with us and have a robust conversation about our concerns. We also thanked the superintendent for sharing his plans for the district's future. As parents, we value these opportunities to meet with our district leaders and we want to be partners in the, in the future of the district. However, we continue to urge our leaders to keep these conversations going and to heed the recommendations and concerns of parents when making decisions that affect our children. Some of those concerns include, one, the use of school-based planning teams as the governance bodies at schools. At the last board meeting, it was erroneously stated that only 12 of our schools were out of compliance with the requisite number of parents. That would be three parents on each school-based planning team. The fact is that 27 of our schools are out of compliance with that number. And of the ones who do list having three parents, we are skeptical about because we have found many errors in those listings. One, the parents listed were incorrect. The parents had moved out of the district. Their children had already graduated from the schools. Or the parents weren't attending meetings because they couldn't make it at the time that the, that they were scheduled. So it is imperative that the board hold the superintendent accountable and the superintendent hold the principals accountable for ensuring we have fully functioning school-based planning teams where all constituencies are represented, fully informed of their responsibilities, and are engaging in the work of the team. Secondly, the extended learning days. Again, we commend the superintendent for taking the issue of graduation rates in some of these failing schools head-on and trying to implement innovative ways of working with our children. However, parents have some concerns about the effectiveness of longer days. One, if the question is time on task, are we sure that the time spent during regular school days is being used effectively? We've heard concerns from parents that their children are spending time watching movies that have nothing to do with the educational process and, or a lot of the time is being spent disciplining students, talking, and not working. So we want to make sure that the time during the regular school days is being used effectively before we have children going into longer school days. Also, if the issues are teachers, unfortunately, we do have some teachers that are not as effective as others. We want to know what's being done to help those teachers become more effective, because spending longer days with ineffective teachers are not gonna help our students either. Thirdly, we want to ensure that schools are welcoming environments for parents. The superintendent this year is taking a bold step by stating that all schools must have an orientation for their parents. We think that there are other things that can be done globally by the superintendent that can ensure that schools are more welcoming to our parents. If the parents don't feel welcome going to the school during the day, they're also not gonna go in the evening. They're not gonna go regardless of how many dinners we provide, childcare we have, or transportation that we afford them. So those are just some of the issues that we were looking at this, this year. And after elections tomorrow, we'll be planning for the following school year. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Lucas. I want to congratulate you on the work that you've done with the Parents Council this year and with staff, with the staff support. You've done a great job of really giving the Parents Council a great voice. And we do depend on the work that you do with the parents in terms of the work that we're doing to get that kind of immediate interface and intermediate, that feedback as well. So I want to congratulate you on your work and thank the Parent Council for this year's work and look forward to this coming year.
Thank you.
Vice President.
Yes, Commissioner Elliott.
Can we get those reports in writing?
Yes.
That would be, yeah, great point. If we can do that, that would be helpful. And we'll enter them as part of the record.
Okay. I'll send it to Shanay.
Thank you. Last report is my Policy Committee report. We met on June the 14th. I'll make it very brief. We discussed proposed hiring and recruitment policy, transportation options, and the proposed amendment to the responsible bidders policy. With regard to the hiring and recruitment policy, I want to thank Commissioner Elliott, who brought this issue to us very early on and was, was very interested in how we hire our folks and giving preference to those who have experience in the district and also getting our staff to move into the district and home properties. We had a number of discussions with regard to this policy. Many hours, the staff did a tremendous amount of research and we came together with a policy you have in front of you this evening that's information, it's an informational item, but I think begins to at least discuss some of this major concerns that we've had. Giving preferential hiring to individuals who've graduated from high schools that are urban populations, also individuals who've had, had experience in volunteering and working with urban youth, having been to the city school districts, schools, and also being able to benefit by receiving assistance, Employee Assisted Housing Initiative from the City of Rochester and our program that offers $3,000 to cover closing costs for anyone interested in purchasing property in the city as, as members of the school district staff. So, these are the kinds of things that we're looking at in terms of how do we entice people to come, to live in the city, to be a part of the city families, and to really understand the kinds of issues that our city has as opposed to living in other areas and be an integral part of our staff. And I want to thank Mr. Johnson and Deborah Flanagan for the great work they did and the research putting this together. So again, this is an informational item for you this evening, and we can sort of talk about that a little later. Policy Committee also reviewed related issues regarding transportation and, for the first time, really looking at how do we strengthen the zones to, number one, save some of the money that we do spend. I believe we spend about $51, $52 million a year on transportation. It is a major part of our budget and we're looking at ways that we can reduce that expense. Potentially hardening the, the zones is one way. We're looking at what are those things we can do now that are within our power to be able to do? And then, once we've gone through those, take a look at what may be potential, some policy issues that we contend with in order to do that. This is an issue that we're taking very carefully. We're being very sensitive to it because it could be disruptive if we don't implement this correctly. So this is an important part of the whole idea of how do we get to a point where we can provide transportation to all our children and do it in a cost-effective way. So, this, the committee and Vicky Ramos is going to be a part of the continued research on this and our staff will also be helping with that as well. Finally, we have amendments to the proposed Responsible Bidders Policy in accordance with recommendations of the Diversity Committee. The policy will allow for the purchasing officer to consider a bidder, bidder's nondiscrimination policies and demographic characteristics of their full-time working staff in terms of determining whether a person is considered responsible. This policy, the committee approved the amendments and have proposed it this evening also as an informational item. The second, lastly, is that we submitted for your consideration this evening an amendment to the Code of Conduct, the district's policy against harassment of students and employees. These amendments are to incorporate the requirements of the Dignity for Students Act, which is a federal act that goes into effect on July 1st. For this reason, we were asked to fast-track this and we're requesting that this policy be expedited and voted in this evening's package for approval. And the third, lastly, I would like to provide an update regarding our status of the condom availability program. We have received word from the New York State Commissioner of Education that they are currently, they did receive our package and our information and they are reviewing it. And the School, School Health Advisory Council has been informed to make recommendations regarding the program implementation content and evaluation. And we will, we hope to receive word from, from the state after their review of the program. And we look forward to the implementation and training over the summer. I want to thank Gladys, Zara Sabudos, and her staff for the work they did in putting it together. We had a meeting of the, of the committee. There were, Gladys, real quick, how many people were there at the committee meeting?
Twenty-five people showed up to the committee meeting, from all different walks of life, different, different perspectives of the community. It was a great discussion and I think the interest in this particular policy is very, very important to what, going forward. So again, thank you, Gladys, for the work that you've done. That being the case, that's, we're, and our next meeting is July the 19th, immediately following the Finance Committee. Thank you all for the work that you're doing on the committees. We will now go into consideration of resolutions. Our first part of the resolution package is 805 through 830. If I could have a motion to...
So move.
I'm sorry, I'm getting comments from our clerk. Sorry.
Move.
I'm sorry.
Motion to move up 868.
Oh, okay.
So move.
All right. Yeah, just let it go by itself. It'll get there. So a motion to move 868 on the agenda before we get to the other rest of the packages.
You said move it.
And move it up.
Move it up on the agenda?
Move it up on the agenda.
Okay.
You looking for a motion?
Yes.
I just gave the...
Well, you have a motion from Commissioner Elliott. Second it. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we are going to be discussing the contract of employees for the superintendent of schools, City of Rochester. No, no. I didn't think so. All right. So, we have the motion to the...
We have the second, first by Mr. Elliott, second, Commissioner.
Go.
Yep.
I forgot Campos.
It doesn't make any difference. All right. So it's 868. Okay. All right. If we can take a look at 868. All right, comments?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, I'll, I'll get us started here. I will not be voting in favor of Resolution 868, principally because I believe the process for selecting a superintendent was flawed and unfair. There's no reason for me to go into the details, as I have noted my objections to the process at length in previous hearings. While it is no secret that I have concerns regarding some management and communication decisions of Dr. Vargas as of late, I would note, it is important to note, that I am committed to working with Dr. Vargas in a respectful and diligent manner to make our schools safe and so all of our students can be successful, a goal which I know he is deeply committed to.
Any other comments on Resolution Number 868? There be no further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
We show one opposition. Commissioner White?
Thank you.
All right. 868 passes. Congratulations, Superintendent Vargas.
I just want to say that, I want to congratulate you. We look forward to working with you as superintendent of the Rochester City School District. I know that we've got a lot of expectations of you. We've got a lot of hope. And we're encouraged, obviously, with the work that you've done up until now. But we've got a long way to go to get this district to where we need to go. But I think with your leadership and our support, and our leadership in terms of the vision and mission of, of, mission of this organization, we're going to get there. So I want to thank you and we look forward to continuing working with you.
Thank you. I want to thank the board and the, everyone who works in the district and the family and the students. And I just want to be sure, my most sincere thanks to you is I believe I'm the first superintendent in many years that had received a four-year contract. I have a commitment to stay. We had to change the culture of this district, that it's children's center, a center around the needs of our kid, not the needs of the superintendent, or for that matter, the need, or any other adult. Having said that, four years is enough for me to show you some significant progress. I haven't made a single promise that I'm going to change graduation rate for you, and that is for a reason, because we have a lot of business to take care of before we get there. One of them, for example, I sincerely believe that with the behavior and the culture that we have in the district today, it is impossible to improve graduation rate. So that, that's the first thing that I have intended to change and I will continue to try to do that. How we are going to do that, we are going to say, for example, that it's no longer acceptable for us, school, to open the door. We're having a clear plan in how to improve student achievement and serve our family. And yes, provide the support that teachers and the student and all the member of the school community need. And I, I'm so pleased to work for a board that understand that. That, I don't think that there's any board that is so positioned that understand that we, yes, we do need more time for our students. It's no longer acceptable to think that you send a kid at 1:15 in the afternoon, at least on Wednesday, and you send a student with a lot of homework and project to do, only to come back the next day where they work down. And for us as an adult to discuss the various challenges that they face. They do face challenges, but they can learn. But we have to give them the time and the support that they need. And that is the primary goal that I, I believe and so that we are partnered on this effort. And you have demonstrated to me twice already. We have two schools the next year are going to open to provide our student more support and more time for learn, for learning. It, it, it defy common sense to think that you're gonna add more to our curriculum, more demand for our students... going to add more to our curriculum, more demand for our students to learn more, to get active, to get a regional diploma, and yet you're not changing the time. It is possible all our students will learn if we give them the time and support that they need to do so. The same message you go to our community. The time is not just, I'm not talking about just the time that our children spend in our school. We also have to be more focused in how they spend their time during the school break, during summer. Yes, I expect every parent and every member of this community to encourage our youngster to read independently for, for the joy of learning. Yes, I expect our family to have a library card for our students. That is possible whether you are facing challenge or whether you are not. I was very touched the other day that I went to the Monroe County Jail to visit some of our students. And the interesting thing was that many of them were reading and had books. I visited one of the jail where there were about three books in there. That tell me that our students, if we, we raise out the expectation, they will rise to that occasion. But I will conclude by taking each one of you. Many of you work so hard and it goes unrecognized. And you, you share an incredible passion for this community. And I know this community has an incredible passion for our students. But it's time that we turn our focus to our students, stop the politics that may repeat, stop the disagreement among one another, and we need to come together. I'm very proud to say to you today, it's a classic example of what we do here with the ITA. We were among the first, if you know the first, in New York State to come with an agreement about the teacher evaluation, which is rather challenged. And it has a lot of things that should concern all of us. But that shouldn't stop us from reaching an agreement and moving forward. Once again, thank you. And I want to thank President Evans. I promising a year ago that I will not let him down. And I want to say, I see, experienced the loss of his mom, which is very difficult. President Evans, and each one of you, I will do my very best not to let you down.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now go into considerations of resolutions. Now we can do that? Thank you. First, first series of resolutions, eight oh five through eight thirty. I have a motion to accept eight oh five through eight thirty.
So move.
It's moved by Commissioner White. Seconded by—
Second.
Second by Commissioner Elliott. Any questions or concerns about eight oh five through eight thirty?
Vice President Cruz.
Yes, ma'am.
The resolutions, eight twenty-five through eight thirty. Typically, I don't support any of those extra payments for various things because it has not shown that it translates into higher test scores or graduation rates. So, I typically don't support these. I'm also, and Mr. Superintendent, I'll ask you about this at another time, but let me just put it on the record now. These are in, these are for summer sessions, but when we, when these resolutions come before us during the school year, my ques, my question is, is that a form of double dipping? And so, I won't ask the, I mean, I, I'll put that out there right now, but you can give me an answer at another time. That occurred to me as I was going through these resolutions. But I'd like to propose amendment because I won't support these extra payments, but I will support the, the Resolution eight twenty-five for school without walls because of the work that they have done. So, I'd like to make an amendment to separate, and I did have the page number, but there, eight twenty-five, there are two resolutions that the principal director is Dr. Adonia Cross there. I will support those. And so, yeah. Well, look at where eight twenty-five is.
So, there's a motion on the table to sever out eight twenty-five from the bundle?
Start at page twenty-four, yes.
Is there a second?
Twenty-four.
Second. Second by Commissioner White. All those in favor to sever?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition?
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll, we'll sever out eight twenty-five.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
I need to sever out, it's eight twenty-two as well. My son is subject for removal and I want to abstain from that. And I, I want to support the entire rest of the packet, but of course, I don't want to, I can't, I shouldn't vote.
Motion to sever out eight twenty-two?
Well, well, no. One person in that packet, Brandon White. See, I want to vote for the rest of the, the, the resolution, but I don't, I want to be able to support the rest of the superintendent's effort to reduce the, the budget and reduce those employees, but I cannot vote.
So, we would—
See what I'm saying?
Yeah, so you would have to offer an amendment to take, to take out that one name from the packet?
That's right, that's right.
From eight twenty-two.
Call it eight twenty-two B.
Eight twenty-two B. So, we'll create eight twenty-two B?
That's right.
All right. Eight twenty-two B severs out the one name.
That's right.
But keeps everything else whole.
Well, and, and then I have another amendment.
Well, hold on.
Okay, all right.
So, there's a motion to sever out one portion of eight twenty-two and make it eight twenty-two B. Is there a second?
Well, did we take care of the one for eight twenty-five?
We severed it.
Yeah.
We'll talk about it later.
Okay. Our board, the clerk is saying, no, we did not.
Yes, we didn't vote on it.
That's on pages nineteen and twenty.
Yes, we didn't vote on it?
We did.
We didn't.
We had a motion to sever, but we didn't vote.
But we didn't, I don't think we voted.
We didn't vote it. Okay, so I'm sorry, let me go back. Eight twenty-five, there's a motion to sever out eight twenty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second. Any objections? Okay. Now, we go back to eight twenty-two. We're creating eight twenty-two B, we're severing a piece of that information from eight twenty-two. There's a motion to create eight twenty-two B. All those, is it a motion? Second?
No, actually, I was looking to the clerk for a direction. She was trying to say something to me, but I, I'm sorry, she says, never mind. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams?
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposition? Objections? Okay. Do you have that, Madam Clerk?
[laughing]
Commissioner White intended to, to take another action.
That, that's right.
So, you want, wait, I want to get them one at a time here.
Yes, sir.
So, that's one, there are eight, okay, so that's, so you're all that one. Okay. Commissioner White?
Thank you, sir. I have another one that I'd like called out from the eight twenty-two. I guess it would be C. Is that right? Eight twenty-two C, the proposed amendment. It would be Christine Richards. I need to talk about that in executive session.
All right.
And I don't want to, I want to support the superintendent's initiative here, but I don't want to vote on that.
So, there's an amendment to create eight twenty-two C?
Yes, sir.
Lacking that one particular individual?
That's right.
All right, is there a, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Okay. Do we hear a D?
No, sir, I'm done.
All right.
[laughing]
Okay. All right, we'll have to walk our way through this one. All right. Any other objections to eight, eight oh five to eight thirty? We have a motion on that, right? So, we have a motion on the package. So, we just go to vote?
I'll be voting on all of the amendments with a separate resolution. Please have a resolution of the C.
Well, one of them is executive session.
Eight twenty-five B.
Eight twenty—
C is—
Yeah.
I mean, we could, we could vote, take a vote on everything but in eight, in eight oh five.
Eight twenty-two B, eight twenty-two C. So, we're, we're voting on everything.
Eight twenty-five B.
No.
It's not eight twenty—
No, because you're taking out eight twenty-five, right?
Yep.
The whole thing.
So, it's every, everything in the bundle except for eight twenty-five, eight twenty-two, B, and eight twenty-two C.
What happened to eight twenty-five B?
We're gonna vote on it separately.
Oh, okay, so please.
Separate the names.
Yeah, we're doing everything except for those ones that we pulled out of the package. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections?
No.
Okay. All right. So, now we're gonna go to, all right. So, we voted, so we did the amendments. All right.
[inaudible].
All right. So, now we're gonna go back to the amended, the amended part of this. So, eight twenty-two B, there's a motion to accept eight twenty-two B?
So move.
Seconded?
Second.
Seconded?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of eight twenty-two B?
Aye.
And that was the removal of one individual.
And, and I'm abstaining from that.
And you're abstaining from that.
And my vote is no.
And there's a no. Commissioner Elliott? Okay. Then, we're gonna go to eight twenty-two C.
Oh, we want to talk about that in executive session.
Okay, so we're gonna remand eight twenty-two C to executive session.
Eight twenty-five B.
Then, there's eight twenty-five B. All in favor of eight twenty-five B?
Aye.
Any, any objections? Okay, so that do it? Is that completely confusing, Madam Clerk?
She got it.
You got it?
She's smart.
Oh, you're good. She's good, she's good.
Very good.
Because you're gonna have to explain it to us later. All right. The next bundle is procurement and supplies. I have a motion for eight thirty-one to eight thirty-four. Moved by Commissioner Elliott.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Any questions or concerns?
Yes, eight thirty-four. I just need to understand why we're entering into an agreement with the purchasing director from Bosse's, Monroe County Bosse's. I don't understand that relationship.
Hi, Garrett.
Page eighty-one.
I was gonna field it, but I saw you were already on your feet.
No, you, I want you to tell me.
Garrett, please.
Not reliable.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
This is a resolution that we present to the board annually. It allows the district to enter into any cooperative purchasing agreements that Bosse's Two does, Bosse's Two Orleans. They offer, they do several cooperative bids with all the school districts in Monroe County. And the one in particular that we use annually is the natural gas bid.
Okay.
And this allows us to participate in that bid.
And we get it cheaper with this relationship?
Yes, it's, it's basically all the school districts in Monroe County, including the Rochester City School District, that leverage the amount of natural gas that we purchase.
One other thing, do we, we purchase in this relationship?
That is, that is the only one at this time.
All right, thank you. Any other questions regarding eight thirty-one, eight thirty-four? Thank you, Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Objections? Okay. Next is educational facilities, eight thirty-five to eight forty-two.
So move.
Moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Any questions or concerns? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Objections? Okay. All right. The other section?
What, here's the pass, information technology.
Eight forty-three.
I'll move eight forty-three, information technology.
Sure.
Eight, yeah, eight forty, I'm sorry. I, okay, that was stuck in there. Just for the record, Mary Adams, you had, do you want to abstain from eight forty-two, by the way?
Yes, and eight forty-six as well.
Eight forty, the record shows—
Eight forty-two and eight forty-six abstain.
Yes, let's show that Commissioner Adams is abstaining from eight forty-two, eight forty-six.
We haven't voted on eight forty-six yet.
All right, so eight forty-two, at least eight forty-two, want to show that. Commissioner White, you took care of eight twenty-two.
Since we're housecleaning here, it, it should have been reflected, well, he's not here to vote anyway.
Yeah, he's not.
Malik is not here anyway.
So, we have a motion at eight, eight forty-three.
Yes, it's been moved.
It moved second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any objections? Okay, other?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Could we sever Resolution eight sixty-two? I'll put that in a motion, as a motion.
It's a motion to sever eight sixty-two from that bundle?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White.
And just, do, does anyone have an interest in discussing Resolutions eight fifty and eight fifty-one, which are policy adoptions separately, or do we just want to keep them rolled up into the consent agenda?
It's a pleasure. Any objections to just keeping them where they are?
Nobody has anything to add to discussing.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
The polit, there are two policy amendments—
Yes.
—that are in the packet. Usually, policy, this is a last, last chance to say something about the policies we're adopting.
Yeah, eight fifty is the harassment of students policy that we've reviewed and the Code of Conduct policy that we've talked about.
Just, just to cover bases, because we are expediting the harassment policy, motion to waive the policy adoption and, and then the policy.
Let me just make, let me make sure that we're all set. So, did we vote on eight sixty-two?
No.
That's what she's asking, too.
Eight sixty-two is the one I'm asking.
There's a motion to sever eight sixty-two on the table yet. We haven't voted.
We haven't voted to sever it.
So, all those in favor of severing out eight sixty-two?
Aye.
Aye.
Objections? Okay.
Just because one of the policies does require that we waive our own rules, might we please sever the two policy resolutions?
Eight fifty-one, eight fifty-two, sever those out?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, we will take them out of the bundle?
Repeat those, which ones? Eight fifty?
Eight fifty, I'm sorry, eight fifty and eight fifty-one.
Eight fifty and eight fifty-one, yes. It's, it's more for formality purposes.
Okay.
And why are we, why is that necessary?
We're fast-tracking these. We have to waive our own policy adoption rules. It's like waiving the forty-eight hour rule.
Yeah, because we're only, we don't, we're not doing a normal three-months review.
It's procedural.
Because we have to have this done for July.
Okay, okay.
Okay. So, we have a motion to accept the bundle except for those, those resolutions that have been severed out. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any objections? All right, so let's go back to eight fifty, eight fifty-one. There's a motion to accept those.
Before we move those, let me, at this time, have moved that we waive our three-step policy adoption process. I can't cite the policy off the top of my head, but—
All right. There's, there's a motion to, to—
To waive policy adoption policy.
The normal ninety-day adoption policy, which involves information introduction and passing of adoption, given that these, particular resolutions have to be complete before July one to, to adhere to the federal policy. So, motions on the table?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Objections? Okay.
Motion to approve both policies, eight fifty and eight fifty-one.
Second.
Motion and second, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we go to eight sixty-two?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Powell?
The board shouldn't be the least bit surprised that I am upset, concerned about Resolution eight sixty-two. This resolution is, its, its function is to change Wilson Magnet Foundation Academy to a K-8. As you know, and I don't need to go into great depth about this, I've objected to the K-8 movement. And so, it's not of much use to me to see a list of all of the K-8 resolutions that we have approved in the past. I think if you look them all up, you'll find that I've opposed most of them. But this particular one is more egregious to me than most, in part because we, we heard the superintendent tell us that we would go broke trying to convert our K-8s, you know, from a physical plant standpoint. Here we have the Wilson Foundation Academy, which is the last new building this district has ever built. The last new building that we have built. And we are going to have to go in and do physical plant changes to make it accommodate kindergartners, first graders, second graders. That, that strikes me as, as very problematic. Number two, we also heard him say that if we don't continue on a path of converting K-sixes into K-8s, we won't have a place for the seventh and eighth graders. And yet, here we are with a Wilson conversion that takes seats away from middle-school age students in order to make Wilson Foundation Academy— In order to make Wilson Foundation Academy a K-8, you actually have to shrink the number of kids who are seventh and eighth graders. You are taking away seventh and eighth grade seats, creating the very problem that in future, uh, school, um, decision-making, we will have to create new seats for. Thirdly, and perhaps most importantly, one of the re, one of the issues that was presented to us around school closures had to, was, there was a recommendation to close school number two. Why? Because there were, that, this, with school two, three, and four all clustered together, there weren't enough students in the immediate neighborhood to fill those schools. They were all under-enrolled, but number two school in particular. With this conversion proposal, we create an even more severe case of, we're gonna create more elementary school seats, taking them away from the middle school population, which we need, creating more elementary seats in a neighborhood that is already under and, uh, does not have enough children to fill the seats that are already there. All of the past resolutions about K-8, I have opposed essentially on the grounds that they, that there was inadequate evidence to support, or presented to the board to support it. Uh, it, it's good for seventh and eighth graders, it's been argued, but no one has shown that it doesn't have a detrimental effect on the, those in K-six. Here we have a complex web of logistical issues where we are creating a problem that we will later have to fix. I think there should've been a moratorium before now. We heard the superintendent tell us, that, there's, the last line of this is, resolve that the superintendent's March two thousand ten school portfolio plan be hereby be and amended accordingly. Yet, our superintendent told us, this is our plan, he's gonna have to go forward with it until he gets direction from us to change course. I'm asking this board now to either stop the trajectory or out-and-out change course before we get ourselves into a mess that we can't undo.
Any other comments? Commissioner Adams?
Um, just as, as a resident of this neighborhood, living on Hernan and using the Madison Building since my nineteen-year-old is a little kid, um, I would like to acknowledge the accuracy of the fact that there are a number of elementary schools in that neighborhood. And, um, you know, not, not making any evaluative judgment on the IB model or the model of this new proposed school, I would say that it's pretty clear to us in the neighborhood that the school is not for the neighborhood. So, along with other, other movements, you know, in, in terms of facilities, driving things, and other past threatened school closures and so on, this represents yet another move away from, um, neighborhood, small elementary schools that I believe the vast majority, no, I don't believe, I know, the vast majority of our community values neighborhood elementary schools. So, I, you know, I just wanna uphold that and agree with that, that there are a lot of elementary schools in the, in the neighborhood that are doing well, um, that that particular school is, is not really intended to serve the, um, neighborhood children, and that that building has a history of, of tension and conflict around that particular, um, potential conflict. I, um, thanks to the administration for answering some questions that I had submitted in writing about this proposal, but I'm still not clear, because one of my questions was, didn't this resolution already get approved by the board to transition that building to a K-8? And the answer was that yes, that, yes, it had, and I'm, I'm well aware that there is already a transition in, in progress, um, at the building. So, isn't this redundant? I'm still not clear, um, if it was already approved in the past, why are we passing this particular language or being asked to pass this language this evening? And then also specifically, when would the facilities adjustments, building, um, changes start? I, the answer was this summer, but what is the actual start date? And I just wanna say for the record, I would like to call a timeout, a moratorium, and stop that process and revisit and have the board take a chance, ha, take time to really discuss overall strategic plan and, and be more intentional about this. So there, there are a couple of questions, um, that I had regarding-
Mr. Superintendent, do you wanna address?
Is this redundant? Is this a redundant resolution? And what is the date of actual physical work?
Something that the board could do the research, but I think that they might have been, and again, I'm not clear to what degree this may, I don't mind it true, that they might have been a glitch, that this school wasn't included in the original, uh, proposal, but that the plan was put in place and to, uh, move forward, I believe. Uh, and you might be able to, um, that this year we did put in there a, a fifth grader, for example, right? And fourth?
We put in a fifth grade, we are a fifth grade, we only have four students, so there will not be a fifth grade there, so it will be six through eight and kindergarten.
Okay. Yeah, so the, the, uh, plan was put in place or, and, and other were being executed, but for whatever reason, there was a glitch that they didn't include it in the original, um, resolution, because it should've having included, because last year we, we started to move forward with the plan. So, again, um, I haven't, no, would you expect me to go and check prior resolution? But I do think that that's perhaps, uh, what's going on in here. So, um, I don't know if you're wrong to answer the question in terms of the work that have been done in the facility.
The question that Commissioner Adams is asking is what the actual start date is for the work on the building.
In the eleven-twelve CIP, it calls out work on this building, uh, with respect to, um, uh, getting ready for the, the younger kids to be, um, to, for the building to accommodate the younger kids. Uh, this board approved those contracts within the past couple of months, and those contracts were just awarded within the past thirty, forty-five days. Uh, since school just ended, n, no work, at, at least, I don't know if anybody started today, because normally a contract is started soon as, um, uh, school is done. So I'm not aware if any work started there today. There are some schools that work has started already, but the work is scheduled to happen this summer.
Commissioner White?
Yeah, um, my only concern is, and we've talked about this in, in a number of different venues, but the conversation about K through eight reconfiguration actually began some time ago under, uh, Dr. Vargas's predecessor, Jean-Claude Bizard. And, uh, you know, we, uh, used the committee process to sort of vet this whole idea, and we had experts, principals, teachers, in a setting just like this, and I believe it was a standing-room-only, um, crowd in attendance. And overwhelmingly, and I can't, I can't speak to your concerns, and I know, Commissioner Powell, you and I have spoken about this offline, there are a number of people who believe that the research does not support that this is a good configuration. Let me tell you something, at that ESA, ESA meeting, there were plenty of people that said this was the right thing to do for our kids. So I'm a bit concerned about shifting when we go from one superintendent to the other. Uh, what our kids need is stability, and I think I heard Dr. Vargas say, uh, a couple days ago, that, uh, you can make any amount of work if you implement it with fidelity and you're faithful to the charge of educating kids, and I believe that. Um, and if we're always shifting from one mode or op, of operation to another, that can't be good for our families and our kids. So, I just, you know, I, I hear you, Commissioner Powell, and I know that you are, two are generally concerned about our, our kids and this configuration, but I gotta tell you, their people came to that committee meeting, uh, and they were generally concerned about embracing kids and keeping them and, and, and keeping them from K through eight, uh, at that critical emotional stage for our kids. And they were just as convincing as you are. So I'm concerned that if we, and I know this is, is not where your head is at, but if we just sort of do the flavor of the month, or the research is put out there in front of us every four years or every three years, it's just not good for our kids. So I, you know, the moratorium, you got people with the hammers in their hands, ready to go, because somebody said, just as convincingly as you're saying now, K through eight is the right model. So we, we made a decision, and now people are saying, wait a second, it wasn't the right decision. This is, I think, why urban education suffers so much, because people can't make a decision and stick with it. And I, I believe Dr. Vargas is right on this point. We, and, and Bohan, you tell me if I'm misquoting you, but I think he said the other day, any model can work if you're faithful to that model and those kids. And, do I have that pretty much right?
Yeah, correct, and if I might, I just wanna advise the board that when you make a commitment to a community, and a commitment have been made, at least for this school, when they talked to parents when they were selecting, um, and I understand the concern of all the people and all the thing, but this is not, um, the time. And again, you have sixty building. Um, we can, this September, we are going to begin a discussion which include, I think, Commissioner Adams and all the interests that have been expressed, but I, I would urge this board to support this resolution. Uh, if it, for, like, I, I did mention to this board when you hired me, that I was not going to bring you a new approach, but I, I was gonna work with what we have and bring a stability to the district. I do think that, um, it is very dangerous, and we, in the absence of a larger discussion, for you to, um, um, begin to stop. First of all, we made a lot of commitment to a lot of family, including the model that we, the family who selected to send their kid to sixth grader, they already bought into this IB K, um, eight. Um, and let me just, again, the research is very clear and very convincing that a K-A model could be beneficial to some of our students, because the early, the children in their early age have more in common with the kid going to puberty and so on and so forth than the, uh, high school kid. Now, because we have different model, I will be telling you that the implementation with fidelity, Commissioner White is talking about, is important, and I also, let me conclude by saying that if this district cannot go into a single model, because you, you go into a portfolio, and also we cost you a lot of money as well. So, um, and the model that you have before you, definitely, my suggestion is that you make the necessary adjustment, uh, particularly when appropriate. This board and the community are gonna have an opportunity to look at facility plan, uh, which is due to me in September, which will be used as a guidance for that larger discussion.
Commissioner Powell has her comments, and then Commissioner Adams?
And if Mary has concerns, um, to respond to, uh, Commissioner White, and the meeting that you're referring to, packed house, a lot of reliance on heartstring logic, including, let, let us embrace our babies and keep them for another two years. And that's, that was the argument used at school sixteen, in order to keep, or to expand into the seventh and eighth grade. What was the real reason? Probably the real reason had more to do with the fact that their enrollment was low enough that if they didn't do something to keep their building full, they would be that school that was, had, with a big bullseye on it that says close, you know, due to low enrollment and low test scores and low everything else. That was, that was the, part of the conversation that didn't happen. Okay? But we found, we figured it out later, didn't we, uh, to our detriment? What's different about this one is all of those heartstring arguments about, let's embrace our babies for two more years and keep them in that low nurturing environment. We're talking about growing this K-8 from the bottom. That is going to be a much harder course to change if and when we decide that this isn't appropriate anymore. It's, it's not all that difficult to grow out the seven and eight and then say, eh, this isn't really working for us, let's go back to the junior, senior high school model. Uh, or, or at least for this building, let's go back to K-six. That's an easier revert, course reversal to take than what we're, what's being presented to us with the Foundation Academy. And I, I have to apologize for not making the argument strong enough back when we were talking about facilities. The resolutions around the facilities were all hung up with contingent upon city council approval, and the issue of K-8, quite frankly, was buried. And, and I wasn't thinking of it at the time.
Commissioner Adams?
I just wanna say I'm, I'm coming at this from a very pragmatic point of view. This is in response to Commissioner White's, um, you know, appeal for stability. I could not agree more that we need stability, we need to minimize uncertainty among our families as much as possible. And, um, but that sort of also goes to the point of, you know, in recent weeks and months, Dr. Vargas and President Evans have been, um, sort of, um, communicating to the community that there may be a need for downsizing, there may need, be, need to be closures and so on. That is, um, really spreading the uncertainty throughout the whole district, and in terms of commitments to families of students who are in current schools, who are sending their, their children to schools with the expectation that they will be able to be part of that school community and grow that school community and, and contribute to it. That's as much an undermining of a commitment to our families as is the planning that has been done. And I was not aware that there was an issue with not finding enough fifth graders, only four fifth graders, to attend, um, Wilson Foundation, but that should really inform the planning. If there's that low level of demand to go to that school, that should be a signal, along with all of the other concerns that have been raised, that many people are very satisfied with school number two, many people are very satisfied with school number four that are right in, in that area. So, you know, I'm just asking that, this is not, you know, asking for a halt or a timeout on this is not in any way in the interest, from my perspective, of creating instability or constant change, quite the contrary. I'm looking for a reasoned way forward. And, and then the cost is, you know, and that's been raised for years, the, since the proposal to change the Madison Building to an elementary school, it's been repeatedly raised.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Any other comments or concerns?
Well, my only response to-
We'll wrap it up with you.
Yeah, my only response to Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Powell is I, I hear you, but our superintendent is telling us that he thinks this is the best thing for the district, and, you know, we, we gotta rely on his judgment. I, I, and, and we did before with Jean-Claude Bizard, and we should now. Uh, you know, we can't, we can't litigate or figure out this issue here at the DS right now, we can't. We were given some direction quite a while ago, and he's giving us some direction now, and they're consistent. And that's the kind of stability that our kids are entitled to through different superintendents.
Thank you. All right. We'll go to vote on this. All those in favor of Resolution eight six-two?
Aye.
Objections?
Opposed.
Opposed by Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Adams, the record show. Okay. So that takes us through- That takes us through the, that package, right?
We didn't vote on all the other ones.
No, we have-
So we gotta go back to, um, eight, it's gotta go eight forty-four through eight seventy-three, is that right? All right, so-
Minus the ones we've already talked about.
Minus for, minus the ones we've resolved separately. All right, there's, there's the motion on the table? And eight sixty-seven, oh, let me, let me, thank you, uh, clerk, gentle clerk. I'd like to, uh, move, uh, resolution, a motion to move eight sixty-seven from the package and bring it up to, uh, new business. It's regarding information on school twenty-eight.
Yeah, I'm, um, may I, can I have a motion to do that so we can take it and move it on the agenda?
Move by Commissioner Elliott, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner White? We're moving, just moving this from the package up to new business. Cause we have, not, no, we call for new business.
Which resolution?
Eight sixty-seven.
Eight sixty-seven.
Yeah, the one on school twenty-eight.
School.
We're gonna, we're gonna move it to a new business.
I thought we were pulling that from the agenda altogether.
There's some additional information that the superintendent was-
Yep, um, I would like for, if you come-
Hang on, I wanna, I wanna just get it out of the pack, the bundle and move it up to-
Yeah, the motion's suspended. Yeah, the motion's separate.
Move several, but to move it to the, to a new business.
We have to finish the other resolution.
We gotta finish the other one, so. There's a motion on table, seconded by Commissioner-
It can be me.
Me.
White.
All those in favor of moving eight sixty-seven to new business?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Okay. So, let's go back to the original package, eight forty-four minus the whole host of other resolutions that we have. You have them, Madam Clerk? Okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Objections?
Uh, eight sixty-three, no.
Wait, are we discussing or voting on?
I'm voting.
No, I have a discussion.
On which one?
Eight forty-five.
All right, so, okay. All right, let's go back. Further discussion on eight forty-five?
Um, thanks.
Commissioner Adams?
Okay, so, I have a question about clarification. I'm sorry. This is for a facilitator across agencies regarding the Federal State Schools Healthy Students Grant, and thanks for the response, but I'm not clear on it because this is a five-year grant that ends one year from now. And the answer was that we needed this grant-funded position to have a new, neutral, full-time project director to facilitate the work across these different agencies. But then it says this is for the five-year, for the full five-year period. So, is this a new position just to sort of wrap up the last year, or has it been filled by another individual the last four years? Just some clarity.
I probably wrote that vaguely, and I'm sorry about that. At the beginning of the grant, the requirement was a new project direct, neutral project director. We've had the same person for going on five years now.
Okay, so this is just a yearly thing?
And she will return back to the county when we're done.
Yeah, wait, once you leave.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on any other resolutions within the bundle outside of the ones we've severed out?
Eight sixty-four. Are we on that?
Eight sixty-four, yep.
Um, no, I'm sorry.
That's it. That's it. One, page one thirty.
Yeah, eight sixty-four. This is a grant-funded position, and I had asked some questions about what's the source of the grant, the term of the grant, the length, and so on. And the answer was that this, this is funded through a CDC grant via the University of Rochester from a period of September thirtieth, two thousand eleven, to September twenty-ninth, two thousand twelve. So, that's just a couple of months from now. And it's a, apparently a full-time administrative position with an annual salary.
As soon as we-
And it's a school health coordinator. And so, my question was about credentialing in terms of physical education versus health, and, you know, the appropriateness of, of this grant position. So, I still have questions and concerns about that, especially now with the timeframe, if it ends two months from now.
Dr. Vargas, is there anyone on staff that heard the question that could answer?
Sorry, what was the question? What was the question?
Gladys is coming up.
A grant for a school health.
Prudential.
Gladys, sir.
Great.
Um, this, uh, this is a CDC grant that we were awarded to work with the community, community health from U of R. This is very specific to our coordinated school health program. It is an evidence-based program that pretty much looks at health in a holistic matter. That means physical activity, it means nutrition, it means establishing wellness committees in the schools as well. So, this position basically is helping those schools establish their plan for integrating the coordinated health school program. That's, it's, it falls under physical education and health education, and that's all I know because I, I work very closely with Carlos Coto, who's not here. So, I thought at least I could give you that information on it.
Do you have any information about if the work has begun already, or if the work is to begin now? And if the work is to begin now, is it only through September two thousand twelve, a couple of months?
No, the work, the work has started, but it's gonna, it's continuous as well.
With this individual?
That's my understanding.
This position?
Yes, this position.
Bethany, wait.
Mm-hmm. It's the same.
Can I, I'm not sure exactly how to do this. Like, do I make a proposal to carve this out and consider it in executive session so that we can talk a little bit, or after executive session? Okay. So-
So, there's, there's a motion to sever this from the package, eight sixty-
Eight sixty-four.
Four, to take it, to charge it to executive, executive, executive session for this evening.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Commissioner Elliott, moved by Commissioner Adams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, eight sixty-four goes to executive committee.
Executive session.
Executive session. All right. Is there anything left to vote on?
Well, I'm voting no on eight sixty-three.
All right. So, we're, we're back to the original motion, bundle eight forty-four to eight seventy-three, minus all of the resolutions we've severed out that have been captured by Madam Clerk. All right. So, all those in favor?
Have a next one.
All, all those in favor of accepting the bundle eight forty-four through eight seventy-three with the severed resolutions taken out?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections?
Eight sixty-three.
Abstain eight forty-six.
Eight sixty-three, Commissioner Elliott said no. Is there any others? There's a-
I voted eight forty-six.
We show an abstention?
No, that's wrong. Barry, Barry was, you're gonna talk about it after.
No, 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 that's separate.
Eight forty-six is one that's the U of R, and I'm abstaining from it.
Yeah, 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 it's an abstention, okay.
What was your other?
All right. Again, all, any objections? Okay, motion passes. All right, so we're all set there. Okay, we've got that done. What we're gonna do is now, new business, we got several items. Two are proposed for informational items in the policy committee in terms of proposed recruiting and hiring policy.
Can I just make a comment on that?
You may.
I, I just want to thank the policy committee and the board for considering this hiring policy. I think about the article that was in the paper a couple of Sundays and Mondays ago with school nine and the work that Bernice Green is doing over there, or the work that Adonia Owens is doing and some others that are doing, who understands the urban environment and know how to compartmentalize the kinds of issues that our students are facing and still teach our children and still work through those issues. And so, this policy gives us an opportunity to be able to make sure that we have people who understand an urban environment so that their ability to manage it in the classroom is far more effective, and their ability to make the appropriate decisions is much more effective. In other words, you know, you don't want somebody who's just going to send one of our students to a, or, or suspend him because he may be going through some issues at home. And so, with employees in our district who understand that, I think that we will reduce our suspension rates, we reduce behavior issues, and we will absolutely increase academic success, I believe. You know, just with what the work that Bernice has done over school nine, it dropped the behavior rate seventy percent. And so, I'm looking forward to discussion of this policy with this board, because I really believe if we look, particularly when you have eighty percent of the students in this district who are from an urban environment, but you have employees who work in this district who don't have a clue about the urban environment, there is clearly going to be a disconnect. And I think that has been the experience in this district historically. So, I'm really excited about the fact that the board is going to consider this, and I believe that we're going to see some exciting things to happen as a result of this policy. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Cruz. Thank you, Commissioner White.
Yeah, I want to thank Chuck Johnson for the work that he did on the revisions to the responsible bidder policy. The language that you crafted, I think, went a long way to helping us come up with that proposed amendment. I also want to thank the diversity committee for helping us come up with the language regarding urban experience, because that was not a foregone conclusion. Those folks, I don't think anybody, Bethany is here. I don't see anybody else other than Chuck that served on that committee, but I want to thank you for your work on both of these proposals, because this is the manifestation of your hard work. And lastly, I would warn my colleagues and anybody else still listening that this work will not be accomplished unless we get our legislators in Albany to change the last in, first out. We can say all we want about how people ought to live in the city, employees ought to live in the city, and how our teachers ought to be more diverse, but if the law is that if you're the last person in, you're the first person out, and those folks have no protection. Because the irony here is Bethany's predecessors worked very hard, Jean-Claude's staff worked very hard to increase the number of African-American, Latino administrators and teachers. And we, we saw a spike in employment of, of teachers of color. But they were the last ones in, so they're the first ones out. And I would bet, I didn't ask Bethany this, but I did ask her about the administrators, but I bet you a lot of those teachers that we're laying off, that are being let go, are being let go, and, and they are teachers of color, because the prior administration worked hard on trying to diversify our ranks. So, this, our efforts, we'll be on a treadmill, guys, if we think by coming, and, and again, Chuck and Bethany and other members of that committee worked, and Cynthia worked very hard on changing what we do here locally. But unless the state stands up and says, wait a second, stands up to unions and other interested parties and says, wait a second, we've gotta calculate another, another way for making sure that districts like this have their fair share of people who are of color, and, and just so that folks are mindful. This isn't about making sure that black folks get teaching jobs and Latino people get teaching jobs, and so that black children can see black teachers and Latino children can see black teachers. This is so white children can have the benefit of America's greatness, which is diversity. They benefit by seeing us in the classroom, too. This isn't just a one-way street. We want more teachers of color because we want them. Everybody needs diversity in front of those classrooms. We're, we're living in a global economy where most people don't look like us. And if you put before students a diverse teaching staff, that benefits everybody. So, I would say to all those folks who are in Albany and those that want to go to Albany, this is something we really ought to be directing our effort towards, because it benefits all Americans, not just black and brown citizens.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Any other last comments on the, those two proposed informational items? All right. Let us go to the third portion of the new business, which is Resolution eight sixty-seven. Superintendent?
Yes, I would like if you can join me to receive a brief presentation. They have been trying to have a discussion with the board about this resolution for quite some time. And if you can give us about eight minutes to ten minutes, that would be greatly appreciated.
I'm ready for the Commissioner White.
Yes, I'm sorry, Vice President Cruz, and I can be very brief, and this is probably the right time to do it. I submitted to all my colleagues under, hopefully under new business, a resolution stated June twenty-eighth. It should be on your desk there. It basically, Commissioner Cruz calls for the board to do what we've been saying we were going to do for quite some time. You all remember the uproar that we had over number six school before you got here, Dr. Vargas. We, we went down that road. It happened again. Your administration proposed a closure of six school, and this administration has, has now proposed, I think it's now part of the public record, the closure of number sixteen school.
No, we'd never have proposed the closure of number six school. Let me correct you, because this is extremely-
Please, please, respectful. Just be respectful. I, just let me finish, and we can, we can, we can discuss it, not debate it. And if I've misspoke, and I apologize. All I was trying to say is, there is, you had some concern about number sixteen school and whether it was fit for our students. And I appreciate that and respect that. Whatever decision is made or whatever proposal is put forward, my proposal is very simple. It doesn't even reference number sixteen school. It doesn't reference number six. I was using it as an example that, that this board, and, and example that I think my colleagues and I talked about before you got here, Dr. Vargas. And so, it was a concern of this board before you got here, which was, we ought to have a process for closing down schools. It ought to, there ought to be a protocol. There ought to be a superintendent's regulation that says, if you're gonna propose, whether you're Bohan Vargas, or Jean-Claude Bizard, or Bill Cowler, or Manny Rivera, if you're gonna close down a school, this is the process that you must adhere by. You must talk to the parent advisory council, she's gone. You must speak to the zone improvement teams. You must speak to the, the, let's say, ESA committee. You must speak to the finance committee, because these things have financial ramifications. So, all I'm calling for here, and this isn't the time to debate it or argue, all I'm calling for here is that the board, in advance of any further closures or discussions about modifying or changing configurations of schools, that we have a process so that our citizens know what to expect. And Commissioner Powell and I were having a good discussion before this happened, and, you know, often you guys are caught in a tough spot. We want you to talk to us in advance before this stuff gets out in the public. And, and, and we appreciate that, the effort that you have to, you have to balance, when do you talk to the board, and when do you put it out there in the community? But if this resolution says, this will help superintendents, because it'll say, this is the process for closing down a school, and this is who you must talk to first. And, and by the way, I say, school-based planning teams, they should be part of that process. PTA should be part of that process. But whatever the policy or finance wants to come up with, I would refer this to policy, Commissioner Cruz.
I will, there are bylaws. I, do I have the, I have, I can charge it to a committee, right?
The one who are down next to charge.
Right, so I'll charge this to the policy committee for initial discussion, and then we'll take it from there-
Thank you very much.
With regard to remanding it to other committees as indicated. Okay. All right, we'll back to eight sixty-seven. Superintendent?
Commissioner Cruz, if I might, I just want to, because the, I have given you a report about school number sixteen, which had nothing to do with closing or opening school. It has to do with my obligation as your superintendent, daily, to examine the operation of this district. And what we found there is, you have a report about what we found about the physical condition of that building and, and the feasibility for opening the school in September. And I urge you to, each one of you to take the time and to read it, and having a discussion with the, ongoing discussion with the member of the school number sixteen and that neighborhood, and also the parents from that community.
Duly noted. Madam Clerk, you gotta, you receive the copy of that report. All right, it's on record. All right, let's go to eight sixty-seven. I'd like to put a time limit on this of about ten minutes, if we can, please. No more, no less.
Yeah, we're gonna go downstairs.
We gotta go down here?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
All right. So, it's eight thirty-one. You guys till eight forty-one, though. Make it work.
I have two seconds. I have time for this.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call for a five-minute recess so that we can get everything straightened out and allow people to do whatever they want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Good evening, commissioners. We're here to seek the board's approval on the schematic design for school number 28. I will be really brief in introducing the gentleman behind me. To my right is Tom Renato, who is the executive director of the Rochester Joint Schools Construction Board. Immediately behind me is Mr. Peppin Asilian, which I'll take a little moment to introduce Peppin, because he's a very important person in this process. The project management firm for the FMP is a joint venture between Gilbane and Savin. Savin is, to me, often forgot. Peppin is the lead person for Savin engineers and the minority arm of the program management firm, a very, very important person to this project, as he's the project manager on this project. And the other gentleman is Mr. Short, he is the architect from La Bella. So without further ado, I'll have Tom Renato give you some more specifics of why we need your approval in this resolution.
Thanks, Drew. Good evening. Thank you, board members, for having us here tonight to present school 28. The reason why we're here tonight is in order to seek the board's approval for this design development phase of the school 28 project, in order to maintain the schedule for going to SED and subsequent bidding this coming winter, and we'll talk a little bit more about the schedule implications in a few minutes. But originally, the school 28 project had been on the agenda for the board to review back in December, and that, at that time, school 28 was pulled from that resolution because the design, which had been reviewed by town hall sessions and BAC sessions, we had received some pushback from the community and from the folks at the school with respect to the status of that design and the look of that design, how the design was proceeding. So it was pulled from the agenda, from that resolution back in December. The entire design team regrouped, and we essentially re-scoped the entire project. That project originally was, had called for a third-floor addition, and that was the major design change. That third-floor addition was subsequently removed from the project based on the feedback that we had received from the community, from the district, and from the staff at school 28. Mike will be presenting the redesign of that project tonight. That shows you a much more reduced footprint. The third floor has been eliminated and replaced with several smaller additions around the perimeter of the building. And since December, that design process has taken place. We did receive sign-off from the BAC and from the RJSCB with the current design that you'll see tonight, and in order to maintain the rest of the schedule, we're seeking board approval so that the rest of the summer we'll be continuing with the construction document phase, with the intent to go to SED for approval at the end of August, correct? At the end of August. Following that SED approval, we will be bidding in the winter, and that will allow us to start signing up contractors, procuring materials that are long lead items, in order to start construction as soon as we are able to in essentially July 1st of next summer. Part of the reason why we're bidding this winter and procuring materials early is because the schedule has been shortened for this project from a 24-month duration down to a 14-month duration. So there's absolutely no time to lose. We have to hit the ground running come July 1st of 2013 and have everything ready to go. All the contractors have to be on board, all the materials that could take four, six, eight months to order need to be ordered and ready for that construction to start. The project is a complete gut rehab of that entire building, and we are compressing the schedule by 10 months. So that's why we're here tonight, to seek board approval. And I'll turn it over to Mike for a brief presentation on the current design of 28.
Thank you. Just to, just to reiterate, it is, the schedule is critical, the procurement and the increased cost of going to, of reducing it, by reducing the cost is critical to the project. The school programs currently had, has bilingual MAP, we're keeping all those in there. I'm going to go through these really quick to keep on the schedule. We're providing, instead of a 16,000-square-foot addition on the third floor, we're now providing four smaller additions equalling 8,000 square feet, a total of five new classrooms. We're removing all hazardous material from within the building. This is going to be a completely new building from the interior once you, once you come to this building. The red, the dark red that you see up on the screen, those are the four additions that I was talking about. One of them is a main entrance, a new stair tower, bringing an old stair tower that was not in code compliance up online, four new, four new classrooms up on the, your right-hand side, and a small addition up in the front for facilities and maintenance. We're also re-engineering the site to increase parking, to give the, to reduce the burden on the community at large. This is an aerial view of what the, what the site will end up looking like. We're trying to increase, increase and improve the security at the building. Right now, anybody can walk into the building and get through out once the buzzer is, once the doors are open, and they can go anywhere without, without any regard to going to the main office. In addition, kindergarten looks like the main entrance of the building, where we're eliminating that look, and we're increasing the security at the, at the main entrance off in the middle of the, of the image. We're also introducing colors and softening the edges to try and react to the community's comments. They had a lot of concern about this building being very harsh and very hard to the community. We tried to soften the building and bring the colors and bring the curves into, into the building to soften, soften it in the community. Also improving natural light. All the classrooms, they have very minimal natural light. We are trying to improve the natural light into those, into those classrooms where the top windows are all new windows. Again, bringing natural light all the way throughout, throughout. In addition, we're also increasing the accessibility throughout the school. There's segregation of the seventh and eighth grade students from the, from the under, the lower grades and the kindergarten throughout the school. Seventh and eighth grade is being housed on the second floor. K through three is on the first floor, and four through six is on the second floor on the north wing of the building in the yellow. These are just some images of the interior of the building. And I just, I want to really reiterate, it is very critical to have this go through. The schedule is very critical, that if it doesn't happen, that 10-month, that reduction of 10 months to get the school ready and up and running in one year versus two years can, will be compromised. So thank you very much for letting me speak. There's several, the stairs are not accessible, several of the rooms. That is correct. Yeah, so we're increasing the accessibility, handicap accessibility.
Eighty-hand speculation.
Correct. Thank you.
One more question.
Yep, that's fine.
When you say speculation, you mean physical movement speculation, or both air speculation?
Yes, that is correct. Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. We got the presentation ahead of time, it's really good. I love some of that kind of inside work with the openness and that kind of stuff, so some good stuff in there. Need a motion to-
Can I ask a question about my presentation first?
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I want to say congratulations to Mr. Short. I've seen previous designs. Some of them were elaborate, and elaborate was necessary to overcome ugly. This is truly impressive in the sense of, as you phrase it, softening the edges and the natural light aspect makes it look a little less like a jail. The work that you've done to negotiate with the community, I know that they, if I might ask, the increased parking is all with the consent of the neighbors, and we've got commitments that they're willing to sell off the back of their lots. No. Oh, you're not going into their lots? Because I know the neighbors were, contrary to our expectations, actually wanted to keep those extra-deep lots. Genuinely, the architect work that you just showed us really threads a needle compared to past efforts. One of the aspects that you described as only five additional classrooms, that sounds like a significant downsizing of the full capacity that was originally proposed to us. If I might ask, is this, does this reflect a reduction in the number of strands that we expect to go through the building? Please.
Yeah, please.
Because clearly, there's still an effort to create a KA out of this, but we're not talking about adding a full wing, we're not talking about adding a third floor. Five classrooms doesn't sound like we're doing, unless we're reducing the total number of strands.
The original concept called for K8 three strand. However, there was some deviations from that. There was the MAP program, which would have been a fourth strand, and there was also the ASD program, which was another strand as well.
ASD is?
Autism, Autism Spectrum Disorder.
Okay, and that would have been a strand going all the way through?
That's correct. The MAP program is staying, however, the MAP program is becoming part of the strands. So it's now K8 three strand versus K8 three strand up through third grade, and then four strands from fourth grade and on. And then the ASD program has been relocated. So we have reduced the amount of students, in a sense, reducing the amount of classrooms needed.
Can I ask, if with this design schema, how difficult would it be to retrofit it back to a K6 in future years?
I don't think it would be difficult at all.
Thank you.
I have a motion to accept 867 before we go on.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Elliott. Seconded by-
Second.
Commissioner Campos. All right, any discussion on 867?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to-
Yes, ma'am.
Say, I mean, this is a resolution that I was fully prepared to reject, fully. In, in no small measure, because we didn't need more capacity, and we didn't need to take a big school and make it bigger. My concerns have evaporated, what can I say? I still don't like K8s, okay? And I'm going to have, and I'm just going to have to, for the record, indicate that my support for this going forward has nothing to do with it being a KA design. It has a whole lot to do with the fact that this is a building that needs to be gutted. This is a building that needs a facelift, although gratefully not spending a lot of financial resources to do it. And it is a building that needs, to be-
Repair.
To be brought into that Phase One. It's part of our Phase One agenda, we've got to find resolution, and you've done a beautiful job.
Thanks, Commissioner Phil. Any other comments or concerns?
Let me briefly thanks the board, because I know that you did a lot of listening to. When citizens say that we don't listen, I think this is a good example of that work. And the board, many of you brought it to my attention. Actually, I was the first week in the JA, and I was summoned. Jerome and I were in a parking lot in there, and I said, what did I do wrong? And basically, nothing. They just wanted to listen, because we made a mistake to post the design, we are talking to them first. And they were all over my neck. I said, I don't even know how to use the computer to pull that thing in the webpage. But let me just say that the staff and everyone deserve a lot of credit for the patient that you took, and also, it's a win-win situation for everyone, and for the entire district, too.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other concerns? All those in favor of Resolution 867?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Duly noted, all motions passed. There are no further speakers on any agenda items. Any announcements before we adjourn? I'm going to get to that one. You know, I'm not as far back as you think I am here. That being the case, our next business meeting is July 26th.
Motion to go into executive session.
Well, can I announce what our next meeting is first, then we go into? Thank you. Madam Clerk. So our next business meeting is July 26, 2012, at 6:30. I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner White. Seconded by Commissioner Elliott. We will take 2.5 minutes to get downstairs, and then we will end the evening. Commissioner?
How about that?
Thanks.
All right.
All right.